All right, I think we are okay to start. It is 6:34 and I'd like to call this meeting of the City of Urbana Committee of the Whole for Monday, December 2nd, 2024, to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings. There are none. Next is additions to the agenda. Are there any additions? Seeing none. Next, we have presentations and public input. We're going to start with a presentation for the new city's website. We do have to take a recess at 7:00 for a public hearing, so we're going to try not to interrupt a public comment, so we'll hopefully get the timing right for that. So, new city website. Sorry, Sharice, were you asking for something?
No, I'm sorry, I needed to mute my phone.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Thomas Webb. I am the city's IT manager, and with me today, I've got Kate Levy and Mac Patel, and we're just going to give you a little update on the City of Urbana's new website that is launching two weeks. Yes, two, yeah, that works. So, new website is going to be urbanail.gov. Nice, a little bit more concise than the current urbanaillinois.us, so that'll be nice for starters. We started putting together the why of we were doing this, and we couldn't come up with a better way to say it than what Mayor Marlin had put in her press release, so I just copied and pasted that into the slideshow instead. The goal is to make it more accessible, more responsive to community needs, make it more useful to the people we're serving, right? Using standardized templates, style guides, so that when you look at the website and you go from page to page, it all feels the same, it all looks the same, and it gets you the information you want as quickly as possible. So, I'll hand it over to Mac to talk a little bit more about the changes we're making.
What changes we are making, so as...
Can you pull it a little closer? Sorry, those mics are a little hard, the green light has to be on, it has to be pretty close. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So, what changes we are going to make for the new website, this is what I'm going to tell you on this website, I mean, this presentation. So, as Thomas mentioned, we are changing a domain from urbanaillinois.us to the urbanail.gov, so which will be aligned with the state website as well, and all like .go, so people are, I mean, government, all government entities using, so we're going on that one. Then, new brand style guide, so like, it will be more attractive. We are trying to gather the user interface, like more attractive, new designs, and whatever the pictures, and all those details, we can put it on that one. Those going to be there. Then, also, site is more compact, and so when we say site is more compact, we are not like deleting any pages from the old website, but whatever the pages are most used, and whatever the pages are most needed, we are going to add those which, we already added those pages and content, and new web forms as well on new website. So, those are the main key changes we are going to make.
And I'm Kate, I know all of you. Just give you a little bit of background on this whole project, it started about two years ago, and this was a priority of Mayor Marlin's. I started this when Sanford Hess was still here, and we had wanted to do this for many years, and we finally were given the go-ahead. The first thing we did was a website audit, to really take a look at what residents, what people outside of this building were looking for when they came to the website, and also what we were searching for internally. And from that, we culled down our top 500 most accessed pages, and that was done through search terms or just page hits. And then, we sorted all of those, and we met with each department and asked, are these relevant pages, are they still current? What do you want to keep? What would you like to update? And from there, we began a tremendous sorting and culling process, and we engaged a content editor, Creative Allies, out of North Carolina, and we began, we probably worked with them five to six months, we put a style guide together that would guide us, so that we could be intentional going forward with this website. Too often, you know, trying to find that balance between what somebody needs and simply what I want to put on the website, what I think you'll be interested in. So, they helped us find a common voice in our pages, and once that process was done, we engaged our actual website developer, Civic Plus, and began working with them on building the site, the framework for the site, picking all those special things, colors, fonts, et cetera, and then the actual layout of how this new site would look. And to give you an idea, our current site that is going away in two weeks has approximately 14,500 pages and attachments. The new site that we're releasing has 600. So, it was just a, it was a labor of love, I'm going to say that, because I like to organize and clean things up, and we've worked with staff through this whole process, their input on what they'd like to see, and the training on how they can build out the pages themselves and keep it updated. And I think I can turn it back to Mac.
So, what's next? What are the timeline? That's what we are going to discuss. So, what's ongoing right now? We are still updating, as Kate mentioned, we are still updating the content, and she has also put quick links where people can directly go to the page and see like, how can we apply for the permits and the other licenses and everything? So, those kind of quick links, we are adding on that one, and Kate is working on that one. And we have some outstanding issues, which we are working with the service provider, I wouldn't say issue, but we have like a couple requests, how we can make this user-friendly website and something like that, more user-friendly, how we can make it. So, we are working on those kind of things right now. And also, next week, week of December 9, we are going to move to urbanail.gov, and we are going to test, and it will be like internal go-live, I would say. I don't know if Thomas wanted to add anything on that one, but yeah, it's an internal go-live. And Friday, the December 13th, we are launching this website. It will be, our old website will be redirected directly to the new website, which is urbanail.gov, and the old website will be discontinued for the public. We still have some content, if we need it, we can still get it on our backend side. So, that will be there, and we're not just leaving there over there, like, once we are done, like, this is launch and we are done with the website, we are not doing that. We will be getting a feedback through the social media and other website feedback things we are getting on that one, and whatever the changes we need to make, we are going to make those changes, and we do have this analytics things we are getting, and on that, based on that one, we will be able to see like, what are the most pages are frequently used? So, we can also work on that and put in our quick links as well. So, that's that.
That's it? Any questions?
Are there any questions?
I'll add one more thing.
Oh, go ahead, Kate.
The software that Mac mentioned that will be running the analytics, it does a number of things, besides finding, you know, the heat maps for most search for terms and pages, it checks for spelling errors. We can set up rules in it, so if we don't want a certain word in all caps, we can write a rule, so it'll flag it and I'll get a report. But most importantly, it verifies our ADA compliance on this new website, so we are aware of any issue going forward.
Great, thank you. Mary Alice?
That was my question, actually. So, is it WICAD 2.2 compatible?
It should be by the time, yeah, we're working on a few things, mostly with the mobile version, but yeah, the, our compliance vendor, at least according, I should say this, according to the reports we're getting, yes. I'll be interested to see how they compare to real-world experience when people start using it. If we get feedback from people that we need to change things, we can.
There's like an online tool that you can download and you can test it out yourself?
I have not pulled down that tool. Now that you say that, I'm like, oh yeah, that tool does exist. Yeah, so we've been using our vendor to just, you know, do their scanning, but that's a good point. We can take a look at running that tool and just see if there's anything that the vendor missed that we were unaware of, so.
All right, thank you. Chris?
Thanks for doing this, long overdue. I hear you say nothing's been subtracted. When we go to the new website, nothing's been subtracted, right? Is that what I heard?
Nothing that's been actively used in any period of time. Like Kate said, we went from a large number of pages to a much smaller number of pages. So, there are, some of that, a lot of that is a PDF that was uploaded 10 years ago, and, you know, we don't need anymore, right? But there are, so there is some data that will not be carried forward to the new site, but based on the analytics that we use to see what people were looking at when we started this process, nothing that's in use is going away.
Okay, let me just check on my favorite stuff. So, meeting minutes, meeting videos, YouTube videos, will still be there?
They'll all be, yeah, those are all hosted. Those are all hosted at different sites, but we will still be linking to where those are hosted.
How far back?
So, how far back do you, have you imported? That would be a great question for the city clerk.
So, also in the clerk's records, we have all of them for all time, that are available at any time in our office, but I believe when we migrated to Agenda MUNICODE, meeting software back in 2021, I believe is when we did that migration, every set of minutes, agendas, and packets that was originally on the city website and was in the archives should have been successfully ported over to the new Agenda MUNICODE website, the same one that you and everyone utilizes currently to access our meeting materials. So, that is not changing. That will remain the same, and it's going to look the exact same.
Right.
In fact, we are now working with the same vendor for the rest of the website, so it'll be even more compatible than it was before.
Okay, great. Budgets? How far back on that? Just five years, 10 years? 18 years.
18 years.
That's plenty, that's plenty. What about ordinances and resolutions? All the way back to '92? Like it was before, or?
All the way back to '92? Because ordinance and resolutions are also stored in MUNICODE meetings, correct?
So, yes, digitally up through at least '92, but I believe we have ones even farther back, but the complete, the complete accounting of ordinances and resolutions is of course available in the clerk's office, but digitally, we have some going as far back as I think even the '40s.
Well, not that interested in that, but yeah.
Just in case.
Yeah, just in case. And then, I'm trying to think what else I always look at. Oh, policies, like, the police department used to put their whole, or has put their whole policy online, is that going to be available? All that, to summarize, what I've been looking at now, as I go to department to department to department, you know, the bids for public works, the, you know, all their categories and all that, it's going to be somehow available in the new website, right?
Yes, so the one thing that, like, if you had a bookmark to a specific page, that will break, because when we condensed pages, all the URLs change, right? So, you will have to find some stuff again. The nice thing is, this website's built around search, so as you can see, like, the main spot starts, it starts with search, but you can go into each of the departments like you have before and drill down into the specific information you're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, I see, there's going to be a learning curve to, you know, figure out where everything is. The search engine, pretty good? I mean, like, I can type in the word or get close and get...
I haven't had any trouble with it, but I also, I'm not a great person to test, like, that's really one of the things we're going to be relying on public feedback for, because I know what words I'm looking for, so I'm not a great, like, fake tester for what other people might put in.
Last question.
I'll let you know, we're building in a web form for people to make comments about the website, so if they're having particular issues, they can contact us directly.
That's my last question. Who do we contact when we have a problem? You'll have it.
You know, it'll be a main problem.
They'll be linked to a web form.
Okay, thank you.
Any, James?
Thank you. Bravo, great job, that's fantastic. I can't wait to see how it looks when you get deeper into it, but the, I like how it looks at the landing page. I thought I was going to be the only person to ask questions that nobody wanted to hear about, but Thomas knows the answer to, but Mary Alice beat me to it by asking about accessibility standards, so my question would be, what's under the hood? What's the platform that it's running on?
I believe, is it Drupal that they're using? So, yeah, I mean, we're using a third, so we go through a content management system, we don't have to touch any of the under the hood, which is the other nice thing about this particular process, but I, yeah, the backend, I believe, is Drupal.
Does that mean that we will be paying Civic Plus to manage the Drupal platform for us?
Yes, yeah, we will have an annual...
Have to become Drupal experts?
Correct, yeah. We will, our last website was also Drupal, but it is four versions of Drupal old, because we have no Drupal experts with which to manage it. So, that is something we're trying to avoid in this iteration, so.
That's a challenge, I understand why you would do that. And the analytics and the search engine, what's under the hood there?
So, the search engine is a Civic Plus feature. I don't know what their backend is, I could find out, but I don't, I do not know off the top of my head.
Leasing Google or Bing or something else?
Yeah, I don't know what their behind-the-scenes engine is. As far as the analytics, we use a product called Monsido, which is the same product that does the scanning for compatibility and, you know, style guides and things. We will also be using that for our analytics, so.
Does it also confirm availability? Does it report if the site goes down, or do we have a monitoring capacity? It doesn't happen very often, but it does happen?
That is a good question. I don't know that I've looked into direct reportability for up and down.
And this is cloud-hosted, right?
Correct.
Do you know who the...
It's also, it's a Civic Plus product. It's the same vendor as our, it's the same vendor as the website.
But you don't know if they're buying from Amazon or Azure?
No, I do not know what their backend is.
All right, and so I'm going to ask Chris's question a different way. So, you said there are 14,500 pages originally, right? And that included like PDFs, if the PDF had 20 pages, it counted towards that number? Okay, that explains a lot about how big it is. In most cases, when pages were eliminated, I understand the documents, you know, 20% were documents that aren't relevant anymore, you can throw those away. The other stuff that was taken down or pages that were eliminated, how much of that was merged into the new content? So, we didn't really lose the content, but we didn't have, need a separate page for that? Any idea on that?
I guess I'd ask you to ask that again, I wasn't quite following.
So, we've gotten rid of 13,900 pages?
Yes.
Right? I assume some of those actually had content that we wanted to keep around?
Sure, sure.
And so, they got merged into the 600 that were left over?
Right, so, when we went through to get the top 500, and then we asked staff to, for their input, and then as I was collecting information, working with the content editors, I did a lot of combination also to eliminate another 200 pages. So, because it was, it made no sense to me to have a standalone page with 25 words on it.
Okay, so we have pretty high confidence that what we took out was dead wood, not being referenced, not being utilized?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Did the staff participate in the testing of the new website?
They've been working, they've been content editing themselves. Each department has people on staff that have been trained to do...
So, if they thought something was missing, they would have noticed by now?
Yep.
Okay, great, great work.
Because well, whatever they are missing, we had already added, and whatever's not added, we started adding on that as well, so.
Okay, again, I say Bravo.
Folks on the phone, any question?
Yeah, I might...
Yeah, go ahead, Grace.
I think most of my questions have been asked, thank you to those in...
It's a little hard to hear you, Grace, just so you know.
Oh, thank you. I'll try my best. Just wanted to extra clarify the point about the meeting minutes and that kind of information being just housed somewhere else. I think it's not that it was necessarily merged on the new website, right? It's that now we can say, here's a link to MUNICODE, where all that stuff is still housed, and we still keep all those records. We just have them in duplicates for decades back, and now they're all housed on a different site, so they don't have to be each a single PDF on the city website. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, we made a change a couple of years ago, I believe, to MUNICODE, and that's where it's been hosted. Even on the current site, it's just a link to this other hosting place for meeting minutes, so that will just continue to be the same.
Thank you.
Sharice or Shandra, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this moment, no.
Thank you.
Sounded pretty cut and dry.
Yes, neither do I, I'm fine, thank you.
Grace, did you say you had any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you all. Anyone else here in person, any more questions? All right. Oh, Mayor Marlin?
I don't have a question, but a fourth person walked in the room who needs to be acknowledged, and that's Sanford Hess's former IT director, so. So, this effort began under his leadership, along with Kate Levy, and again, this has involved every department in the city, and it's been an enormous amount of work, because it was a huge, there was a lot of stuff on that website, and we hope, and the goal here is to make it nimble and useful and responsive to what people need to know and want to know. So, let us know.
James?
In an effort to use up the last minute before 7:00, quick question, how much does it cost for us to host it on a monthly or annual basis? What's the ongoing cost of maintaining it?
I believe, I don't have the numbers directly in front of me, but I believe the annual cost is $14,000.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you all very much, it's very exciting to have this, the space left, to say the least. We do have just three minutes, can we recess early? Okay, so, we are going to come back to public comment, but we have a meeting within a meeting, so do I need a motion, right? So, I'm going to ask for a motion to recess for the public hearing. Mary Alice?
I move that we recess the committee of the whole meeting.
Is there a second?
I think Sharice.
Sharice, okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes, and we are recessing this meeting, and we will start the public hearing at 7:00, and then come back to this meeting. It is 7:00, and I'd like to call to order a notice of public hearing of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. If I can have folks, thank you. So, it is Monday, December 2nd, at 7:00 PM, and a public hearing, this is a public hearing to approve a proposed property tax increase for the city of Urbana for 2024, will be held on December 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM, at the City of Urbana Council Chambers, 400 South Vine Street, Urbana, Illinois, 61801. Any person desiring to appear at the public hearing and present testimony to the taxing district may contact RCE Sanford, excuse me, Sanford City Clerk, 400 South Vine Street, Urbana, Illinois, 61801, at 2173842362. The corporate and special purpose property tax extended or abated for 2023 were $10,146,1896. The proposed corporate and special service property tax to be leveled, levied for 2024 are $12,1696. This represents a 19.26% increase over the previous year. The property taxes extended for debt service and public building commission leased for 2023 were $0. The estimated property tax to be levied for debt service and public building commission leases for 2024 are $0. This represents a 0% increase over the previous year. The total property taxes extended or abated for 2023 were $10,146,896. The estimated total property tax to be levied for 2024 are $12,1696. This represents a 19.26% increase over the previous year. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Yeah.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilken?
Here. Can you hear me? I heard you from Shandra.
Can you guys hear me?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
I think they can't hear us.
All right, we'll see if maybe we lost the folks on the phone, but the next item is public input. If anyone would like to speak on this public hearing, please feel free to come up to the microphone.
Your old question, will there be another public hearing? Thank you.
Yes, we will go back to the committee of the whole meeting after this meeting concludes, and there will be another opportunity for public comment, but if anybody would like to speak related to this item, please feel free to do so.
Another procedural question, I think the sound is off, because we can't hear anything, and I'm wondering if the two missing members maybe can't hear anything either.
Are these mics working?
These mics are not working.
Nothing.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm not sure.
I can hear...
No, they're not working.
Well, I'm hearing like an echo in there.
Testing remote, people?
Can you hear me? This is Sharice.
Well, thank you, we'll try to figure out that technical difficulty, I don't know what to do about that.
God.
Sharice, I can hear you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Shandra, can you hear me?
Yeah, but...
Okay, is it one of those again where we hear each other, but they don't hear us?
Take...
Hello? Hello?
I'm going to try and call back in and see if that helps.
We are going to come out of the recess for this public hearing, provide another opportunity in case any public would like to speak on this item. Seeing no public comment, this meeting is adjourned. Now, we are going to reconvene the...
Did you adjourn?
I did.
I did, okay.
We're going to reconvene the city of the, the committee of the whole meeting, and we will pick back up with public input, so if anyone would like to address the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole, please feel free to come up to the microphone.
My name is David Huber, I'm a resident of Urbana. I live in a duplex. Now, if you're keeping...
Sorry, we just want to check and make sure that microphone is working?
Work, oh.
Thank you.
Okay. I live in a duplex. Now, if you're keeping score over the past few weeks, that's like minus 50 points and yet I'm a homeowner, so plus 50 points. But wait, I am, among other things, a developer, minus 375 points, give or take. I'm here to say, though, that not all developers are alike. For instance, here's the world's most famous real estate developer, Donald J. Trump, in March 2023. Joe Biden recently announced that he will require every state, county, city and town to submit so-called equity plans to impose the less Marxist housing agenda on your communities. This is not what we need. The Biden power grab will put radical racist left-wing bureaucrats in charge of micromanaging the housing where you live and nobody can be happy about that. I talked about it during my last campaign and people understood it very well. They will use the power of the federal government to abolish single-family zoning, zoning for single-family homes, destroy your property values by building giant multifamily apartment complexes in the suburbs and even next to your house and force your community to pay for low-income housing developments right next door. End quote. To be clear, I am not comparing every defender of single-family homes to some MAGA ideologue. Rather, I am highlighting how so often, too often, single-family homes is a stand-in for something else, which is to say, it can be a code word, it's sometimes a dog whistle. Over the past weeks in this chamber, we have heard from vocal objectors who cast this proposed zoning amendment in a dark ominous light. They told a tale of moral and aesthetic corruption with a supervillain in a leading role. They painted a scene of, quote, "fine homes" in a, quote, "upscale neighborhood." Quote, "one of the 10 best neighborhoods in the country," we are reminded. Quote, "the very existence of our schools depends on it," someone stated. And then, a quote, "calculated effort to, quote, 'convert this lovely neighborhood.' Rentals for students," someone said. By whom? Who would do such a thing? Quote, "developers who wish to enhance their greed," end quote, but also the city, quote, "in collusion with developers." To, to my relief, I received a reality check from a longtime Wuna resident and former elected official who stated privately, out of fear of diverging from the neighborhood party line and the intended social consequences, quote, "this simply removes the distinction between one and two family buildings, except for the extra parking requirements." There's no increase in building size slash ratio beyond what is already allowed for single-family. How is having two front doors detrimental to a neighborhood? I suspect it's the neighborhood's biased perception of potential occupants that is driving their opposition. We use single-family homes to talk about other things, our fears, our threats, our hopes, our anxieties, our desires. We also too often use other things to talk about single-family homes. Opponents of this amendment have decried the amendment as a threat to historic preservation. If the preservation imperative is so strong, why aren't these areas being designated historic districts? I for one would not hang my preservation policy on regulating the minimum lot width of duplexes. Opponents have said that the change will cause a surge in duplex rental housing to the detriment of potential homeowners and yet there is nothing preventing single-family homes in Urbana from becoming rentals. Some have argued that this change would not, should not be made since we will soon have a new comprehensive plan, but for two years we have been told that the plan is developed through the lens of equity and sustainability. I never took that to mean we get to be inequitable until the new plan is adopted. I would also ask the city attorney if a retroactive moratorium on zoning amendments is advisable. Mayor and city council members, the lot width requirements for duplex as written is textbook exclusionary zoning, which is to say it seeks to achieve, to achieve an end that is otherwise discriminatory through the regulatory framework of zoning. I ask you to remember Resolution 202305-033R, which you unanimously adopted in June 2023. How can we pass unanimously a resolution in support of fair housing for all regardless of source of income and not pass this zoning amendment? We forbid rightly landlords to discriminate on the basis of income and yet we entertain the bias of homeowners and risk reaffirming a city policy that seeks to limit housing supply and more specifically rental housing. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to address this committee, please feel free to come up to the microphone, state your name, you'll have five minutes to speak.
City Council, ouch. Hello, City Council. I'm here on behalf of a community that I care about. From recent City Council discussions, I understand that the council will soon be voting on a request for a liquor license for a business intending to set up shop on Philo Road near Florida Avenue. I'm on staff at the Salt and Light Store on Philo Road. In the course of my daily work, I interact with dozens of area residents and I often have the privilege of hearing their views on neighborhood issues. Unfortunately, the urban blight and decay which has come to characterize the Philo Road Business District and surrounding streets means that Salt and Light stands as essentially the only large community service-centered business in the area. Community members are feeling ill-served by city planners and the current sentiment is that the situation is going from bad to worse because residents are reeling from the news of the Walgreens drugstore on Philo Road announcing their impending closure. Additionally, just a few days ago, the Philo Road Burger King suddenly halted business right in the middle of the day with no warning to staff and announced its permanent closure. Aware that the council is entertaining a new liquor license request for Philo Road near Florida, I asked a number of neighborhood folks what their thoughts might be on a potential new liquor store opening its doors there. The response was a resounding unanimous no, underscored by visceral disbelief and distress. All who responded to my question pointed out that the area is already over-served by liquor outlets as well as smoke shops and a slots parlor. Liquor is currently sold at neighborhood gas stations, at Myers, at convenience stores, bars and more. One elderly African-American man asserted with concern that liquor stores on every street corner is a hallmark of poor marginalized black neighborhoods. I haven't had the time to compile verbatim the input that I heard, but the overwhelming takeaway, takeaway for me is that the residents of this district are feeling forgotten, neglected and failed by city planning. They expressed distress on hearing of a proposal to bring in another alcohol outlet and my hope is that the council will represent and protect their interests and vote no on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this committee meeting?
Hi, my name is Gina Peluso. I live here in Urbana. Thank you, Council, for being here. Thanks for all the hard work you do. I'm, I'm here, not kind of in opposition to the zoning ordinance, but here with questions. I looked at our current zoning ordinance and found a lot of discrepancies, like the fact that a duplex dwelling is supposed to be a, a building, not multiple buildings. Like, sorry, I don't have, I don't, I don't do like texting stuff, so. I, I see that we're looking to change the minimum lot area for common line, lot line dwellings to nothing and a minimum street frontage of 20 feet. It just seems like we're, we're making a lot of changes here. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have duplexes. I think duplexes are fine, but shouldn't we have minimum lot areas? It seems like since the beginning of this, from October 7th, from October 17th till now, we've changed our view on what we think really should be done. Should we have no minimum lots? Should we have, I don't know, maybe stick with the 6,000 that it is now? Should we? Now I see that based on today's staff report, we're thinking maybe a good compromise would be 5,000 feet, square feet or 50 feet of street frontage. It just seems like we're like throwing things against a wall and seeing what's going to stick and how we can compromise and I'm all for compromise, but I think that we should really take a look at the ordinance and what it says, what our definitions are of what a duplex is, what should fit where? And make sure that we know what we're doing before we actually change this ordinance. I know that a lot of work's gone into this. It's been months. I'm new to this. I just heard about it a month or so ago myself and I live in the Huna. I don't live in Wuna, so I'm not one of the people from the other side of Vine Street. I'm a Hunaite and I've been living there for 16 years. I love our neighborhood. I love the fact that we're trying to do new things, but I think that we should really think through this before we make changes. The, and the entire zoning ordinance could use an overhaul and we're piecemealing it and we're like, like I said, I feel like we're throwing things against a wall to see what's going to stick. So I would say at this point, I would like to see City Council vote this down. I know that the Plan Commission voted unanimously for it, but it seems to me like we should take our time and do it right and make sure that we're taking people's, you know, all of the input that we can get from people. I, I was really surprised to see two buildings go onto a single lot because we can do that because it's a duplex, but a duplex is supposed to be a single building, a building, not multiple buildings on the same lot in the R3. Anyway, thanks for your time. I appreciate all the hard work that you do, staff, council. Appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in person who would like to provide public input? We have a few emails to read, too. I have three that have been requested to be read into, read out loud tonight. Any other emails that came in that specifically asked to be read out loud will still be included in the record, but will not be read. To the council members, my comments may be read aloud at the meeting. I strongly oppose the elimination of the existing maximum, sorry, minimum lot size and lot area for duplex housing in Urbana as described in the proposed ordinance amendment, ordinance number 2024-11-034 and ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance update section VI-3 for clarity and to remove additional lot area and with requirements for certain uses. The majority of homes in my Huna neighborhood are those little box homes built for GIs after World War II. In my block, 805 East Oregon Street, there are four dwellings, three built prior to 1930, including ours, and next door to us, there is a rental duplex squeezed onto a lot in the 70s. We're lucky that the duplex owner lives locally, is very conscientious, has a consistent pool of reasonable tenants and has willingly interceded on various occasions to help with issues, but his interventions have also been needed. The two bedrooms in our 882 square foot home have windows separated from two bedrooms in the duplex by a few feet of yard and a narrow driveway. Small homes such as ours do not allow for us residents to escape contact by just going to another part of the house. When the duplex tenants are considerate, this intimacy has been awkward but bearable. We drew curtains, we grew bushes, we asked that the volume of sound be turned down to the point we weren't forced to follow every word of their cop shows when trying to get sleep. Likewise, we suffered embarrassment when our babies slept poorly and were loud. When the duplex tenants have been unneighborly, my family has looked at moving. We have nevertheless outlasted many, many tenants, most claiming upward mobility to larger homes somewhere else. Some homes in Huna do have deep backyards, but even these are still mostly set with narrow frontages and thus already deal with the same privacy issues we do, even without being neighbors to multiple residents. If new duplexes are allowed to fit into more of these small Huna lots, they will not have the buffer zone which allows for a semblance of consideration. It will betray our area's already fragile character of modest, single-family homes cared for by their residential owners. There is no way to guarantee thoughtful duplex owners or responsible homeowners. Please don't further challenge our residents' efforts to maintain the pleasant courtesy which for us typifies community life in Urbana by changing the allowed lot sizes, allowing for more duplexes on smaller lots. Thank you, Christina Nortal. Next one. It's from Katie Muir, Ward 7, public input after members of the Downtown Urbana Independent Media Center, who are also a member of the CU Muslim Action Committee, Party for Socialism and Liberation, Liberation Center and Unitarian Universe Church ended their 13-day encampment on the University of Illinois Main Quad on May 10th, 2024. And a group of pro-Hamas protesters led by prominent members of the CU Muslim Action Committee began regularly attending the City of Champaign City Council meetings to demand that the City of Champaign divest from their Illinois funds accounts overseen by the State Treasurer. Shortly after, the News Gazette published an article written by Jim Day, alerting taxpayers to the fact that Champaign County Treasurer Cassandra Johnson and Deputy Chief Deputy Treasurer and Urbana mayoral candidate Deshaun Williams left as much as $36 million in federal aid money in a low-interest account at a Terre Haute, Indiana bank rather than depositing it in a higher-paying Illinois fund account overseen by the State Treasurer, resulting in taxpayers losing money more than $2 million in interest income. The members of the Downtown Urbana Independent Media Center stopped demanding that the City of Champaign divest from the Illinois funds. However, with the apparent goal of showing solidarity with the demands made by members of the Downtown Urbana Independent Media Center, Cunningham Township Supervisor and co-founder of the Urbana Independent Media Center Danielle Chenoweth divested the funds from Cunningham Township and invested in an Illinois funds account overseen by the State Treasurer. The Illinois funds database, there's a link included, the last interest income payment noted as having been dispersed to Cunningham Township on September 30th, 2024, as noted on the bills and payroll report for the period September through, through October 2nd, 2024, submitted by Supervisor Danielle Chenoweth for approval during the October 28th, 2024 Township Board meeting, during which Danielle Chenoweth submitted Resolution T-2024-10-006R requesting a very large increase in the compensation she receives as Cunningham Township Supervisor. The monthly interest previously earned on the funds Cunningham Township had invested in an Illinois fund account would have covered the large increase in compensation ultimately approved for Supervisor Danielle Chenoweth. Although City Council members Christopher Evans and Grace Wilken felt it necessary to closely scrutinize the Urbana Police Department budget, they chose not to question Supervisor Danielle Chenoweth's longstanding practice of using taxpayer money to subsidize events held at the Downtown Urbana Independent Media Center for the sole benefit of members of the Downtown Urbana Independent Media Center, since they are also members of the Urbana Independent Media Center. In addition, no member of the Cunningham Township Board/Urbana City Council has questioned Supervisor Danielle Chenoweth in decision to purchase Amtrak tickets for visits to cities participants lived in before locating to Urbana, paying for Uber Lyft rides for participants, providing $500 cash dispersment, dispersments to participants purchase quarters to do laundry, purchasing renters insurance for participants, purchasing license plate and stickers for participants and purchasing thousands of dollars in gift cards from Shucks. Walgreens and CVS noted as being for participants to purchase food with $11,526.64 being spent in just one month, as noted on the bill submitted for the period beginning August 3rd through September 2nd, 2024, in spite of the fact that all Cunningham Township participants are eligible, eligible for SNAP food benefits. And one has to wonder why anyone would want to pay the exorbitant price for food Walgreens and CVS charges. In addition, although all Cunningham Township participants were eligible for the Y Heep Summer Cooling Program, an exorbitant amount of utility assistance was noted as having been paid to Ameren for participants during the summer of 2024. The exorbitant amount of money consistently being spent on emergency housing at area hotels would indicate that a lot of people are relocating to Urbana to take advantage of the socialism mindset being relied upon to operate the Cunningham Township office, 20 of whom Supervisor Danielle Chenoweth recently informed the Cunningham Township Board did not feel comfortable providing Cunningham Township with any identifying information, including not feeling comfortable with simply providing their name. It has become quite clear that Supervisor Danielle Chenoweth made the independent decision to operate the Cunningham Township Office in the same fiscally irresponsible manner as the White Bird Social Services nonprofit and Eugene, Oregon, has been operating for a number of years, which no doubt will ultimately result in White Bird's cohorts. The rest of this will be included in the minutes. Final one, please read during input, on, input period of December 2nd, 2024, Urbana City Council Meeting. meeting. My apologies for having another commitment during this time. Regarding ordinance number 2024-11-034, amending the Urbana zoning ordinance update section 6-3 for clarity and removing additional lot area and with requirements for certain uses. This ordinance would eliminate the minimum required lot within, sorry, lot width and lot area for duplex to make it easier for developers to squeeze two-unit rentals onto the land that currently has one small, single-family home. This is unacceptable. I live in the portion of the Huna area that is bordered by Maine, Vine, Washington, and Philo, and many times a week walk within this area. These houses are moderately priced and affordable by many first-time buyers and by elderly persons. My neighbor, who has a 900-square-foot house, sold it last year with 17 offers within 24 hours. These houses are in demand. Why diminish the stock of housing if there's already a shortage of moderately-priced houses? Only 37% of Urbana housing stock is single-family housing, while the national average is over 70,000, sorry, excuse me, 70%. Urbana has already done its part in filing, sorry, part infilling in the city with multifamily housing. Furthermore, and more, people suffer from cigarette smoke allergies. It's difficult to control whether tenants smoke, even if listed as non-smoking. This is because it is hard to prove, and the attics and crawl spaces are usually attached, allowing smoke to travel between units. Finally, it is possible for developers to have individual proposals to downgrade lots to R3 zoning by applying to their Urbana zoning commission. This gives neighbors the chance to have a say in housing they would like on their street. Thank you for the opportunity for me to provide my input. Sincerely, Nancy Westcott. Final call for public input. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Are there any staff reports? Mayor?
Quick announcement. I'm happy to report that the application by Angela Bradley for the grocery store on North Lincoln Avenue was successfully submitted today. Fingers crossed.
Thank you for that update. Next, we'll move on to unfinished business. The first item is ordinance number 2024-11-034, and ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance update section VI-3 for clarity and to remove additional lot area and with requirements for certain uses, slash plan case number 2493T-24. Kevin?
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to run through and respond to some of the main issues that we've, that we've heard the last couple meetings that were raised by community members in opposition to this text amendment. These are all detailed in your staff memo, but I'm going to go through them in more condensed form now. So the first of these sort of had to do with the timeliness of, you know, why are we doing this text amendment now as opposed to waiting for the comprehensive plan to be done? So there's already abundant policy guidance in the 2005 comprehensive plan, which is our current comprehensive plan to support the zoning text amendment. And given that the purpose of the R2 zoning district, which is to allow duplexes subject to certain controls, and the R3 district, which is to allow duplexes by right, not supporting this text amendment would be inconsistent with the existing comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. In addition, it is also in, sorry, in addition, the text amendment is also consistent with our draft comprehensive plan, Imagine Urbana. We'll go through each of these things, but I wanted to highlight some of these. So Objective 1.3 in the draft plan is to broaden the economic base and housing options in ways that reflect the city's diversity. Objective 2.2 is to focus on incremental development. Objective 2.7 is to emphasize development in areas with existing infrastructure, natural resources, and amenities to minimize environmental impact. Big move number one is to address Urbana's diverse housing needs, and under that, little move 1.8 is to allow a variety of housing types in every neighborhood at scales appropriate to each neighborhood. Big move number two is to align the zoning ordinance with Imagine Urbana. You've probably heard me say this several times, but one of the big failures of our current plan is that we did not follow up by amending our zoning ordinance and other regulatory documents in ways that reflect the policy intent that's in that plan and has been for 20 years. So under that big move, little move number two is explicit, especially to this, this text amendment, is to implement steps to address immediate concerns prior to the approval of a new zoning ordinance. So that is saying, do not wait several more years to, you know, to rewrite the zoning ordinance wholesale. Tackle the low-hanging fruit. Tackle immediate concerns now. A couple more. Big move seven is to promote incremental development. Little move 8.3 is to prioritize development in areas already served by services and infrastructure. And finally, little move 10.4 is to prioritize equitable access to essential resources such as education, employment opportunities, housing, healthcare, transportation, and recreational facilities for all residents. A second, another concern that we heard from, from commenters the last couple meetings is about incremental change, or on the flip side, our concerns, we've heard that sort of envision this text amendment as leading to dramatic change. So the comments we've received on this have been mixed, but we feel that this text amendment would only lead to small gradual changes, and we believe that because, as we showed last time, on November 18, currently only 3% of lots in the R2 district that are currently eligible for duplexes, so just 49 lots total, actually contain duplexes. And that's over having these rules in place for 50-plus years. Comparable figures in the R3 zone is 9%, so where it's allowed by right, just 9% of the eligible lots in the R3 zone have duplexes. So really, if there's going to be a flood or a dramatic change, you know, there's going to be developers seeking to redevelop single-family houses into duplexes in the R2 and R3 districts, the figures I just stated would be much higher because the opportunity has been there for more than half of the lots in those districts for more than 50 years. Instead, these occurrences are few and would remain so even with the new text amendment. Another concern is affordability. So these incremental changes are unlikely to have a significant effect on affordability of housing overall in Urbana, but it's more likely to have a positive versus a negative impact. Duplexes will add variety to the housing mix that we offer throughout Urbana, and some of those units are going to be in the form of smaller buildings, which will inherently be less costly. Another thing is that right now, we require larger lots for duplexes, which is an incentive for developers to, or whoever, to build larger buildings to, you know, to maximize their development regulations. And requiring larger buildings is going to lead for more expensive duplex units if we're requiring them on larger lots. Furthermore, there are housing studies that have shown that new market rate construction may be more expensive, but the people who end up moving into those units leave behind usually a less expensive unit for somebody else to move into. So that helps with the affordability and sort of a chain reaction of movement. Also, older housing tends to be more affordable housing, but there is no way for us to build old housing right now. The only way to build old housing is to build housing now and then wait 20 years for it to become old, and then those are our affordable units in the future, but we can't do it all right now. Another concern that we heard a bit about is rental housing. Now, the zoning ordinance, and I said this before, the zoning ordinance is agnostic about ownership, so the ordinance doesn't care whether you own or rent. And so while you may have some duplex units that are investment properties held by developers or by individuals, there are other ownership scenarios that play out with duplexes. So you can have an old, older folks who want to age in place, they want to stay in their house. Duplexes give them the flexibility to add a second unit onto an existing house so that they could have a live-in caregiver, or, you know, a family member or someone else. Also, a retiree might add a unit onto their house to provide income to supplement their retirement income, which is usually, you know, lower than what they're making when they're working. Also, an owner-occupant who wants to buy a house that needs some renovation might build an additional unit to help them sort of make up the imbalance between the renovation costs and the final value of the house. And others may find it more affordable to buy a duplex and use the rental income to pay part of the mortgage. I pulled data from the Cunningham Township Assessor, and one out of every three duplexes in Urbana is listed as being owner-occupied. So one out of every three duplex lots in Urbana actually has an owner, owner-occupant presence. Another thing we heard a lot about is community preservation or the notion of community character. So many of the statements that opponents to the text amendment have made seem to be less to do with the use, which is what the amendment is concerned with, and more to do with what the building looks like or the building form. We heard from several residents in West Urbana that said they like the mix of residential uses that exist in the neighborhoods, so that's, you know, homes, duplexes, old apartment buildings that their neighborhood has. Yet they oppose this amendment that would allow the ability for the neighborhood to add a bit more to that mix with duplexes. So really, the concerns seem more about what a duplex looks like and how it fits in than anything else. So in West Urbana in particular, which does not include R3 lots, the building form would be addressed as part of the conditional use permitting process, which is already on the books and would remain so. So if someone requested a conditional use permit to, say, demolish a perfectly viable house to build a new duplex, there could be alternatives that could be explored. So you could allow the existing building to be split into a duplex. You could also allow, say, an addition on the back of that house to add a unit rather than the, you know, the initial thought of let's demolish it and put up a brand-new duplex. And one real key thing that I want to point out is that the conditional use permitting process explicitly requires that a duplex in the R2 district must preserve the character of the neighborhood, and if it does not, the permit cannot be granted. There are three criteria. I won't go through all of them, but the third one in part says that the conditional use permit preserves the essential character of the district in which it is to be located. So in other words, any new duplex would need to fit into the neighborhood, fit into the character of the neighborhood, whereas a single-family home, which is a by-right development, can be built anywhere in the neighborhood without regard for existing neighborhood characteristics. And there are several examples in the West Urbana neighborhood where you have a house that's designed of a more suburban style with a garage on the front of it. That does not fit into the character of the neighborhood, but that is allowed currently by right. So as I've stated, the proposed text amendment is in alignment with the intent of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan goals. It's also in line with the mayor and city council goals. So being aligned with all three of these means that this amendment improves our regulatory framework. It advances the city's long-term plan, and it is consistent with the short-term focus areas and strategies we have. So given this alignment, it is appropriate to consider and address this request at this time. If council denies the amendment, we ask that you articulate specific reasons to staff so that we can draft appropriate changes to our zoning ordinance, our comprehensive plan, or the mayor and council goals that would clarify the extent that the restrictions on duplexes or incremental housing development is desired. Now, while we support the text amendment as presented to you by the applicant and as recommended by the plan commission, we explored alternative scenarios to see if there were ones where the primary goal of the text amendment could be achieved by placing some reasonable parameters on existing lots. We feel that a minimum lot width of 50 feet and a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet is a reasonable compromise relative to the, you know, proposal to eliminate the much larger minimums that currently exist for the existing lots. So this is responsive to the concerns that certain lots might be just too small for duplexes, and it would preclude the smallest lots from being potentially developed or redeveloped as duplexes. So within those parameters, just under 500 of the smallest R2 lots and a slightly smaller number of R3 lots would remain ineligible for duplexes. As I mentioned, staff continues to recommend that council adopt the text amendment as presented, and I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Let's start with folks on the phone first. Grace, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me any better?
You're very quiet.
Could you please clarify that there is no minimum lot size or width for single-family homes in R2 and 3?
For, correct, for, so, sorry, for existing lots in R2 and R3, there are no minimum width or area requirements for single-family homes.
And do you know why this would apply to duplexes and not single-family homes?
I cannot speak to the intent of whoever brought this forward back in 1970, which was when the first time the language requiring additional lot area and width for duplexes came into the zoning ordinance, so I do not know.
Thank you. And I believe that we did receive an email of public input to the council of someone saying that they were part of that original process and that it was to provide a buffer with duplexes when it was recently added as an allowable use. I don't know if you've heard that as a rumor or know, I guess that was a long time ago.
So I saw that email, and I'm not sure, because that, so like I said, the initial language came in in 1970, or sorry, actually, it was an amendment in 1976, I should clarify that. And that was in the R1 district. We didn't have the R2 and R3 districts at the time, but the amendment that sort of moved those requirements into R2 and R3 was in 1979. I'm not sure if that email, if the person who wrote that email was actually on the plan commission then or not.
Any other questions, Grace, before I move on?
Yeah, I need a definition of by right.
Yeah, so when we say by rights, and thank you for asking that question, because folks watching at home probably don't know what that means either and could use that. So by right is essentially, we have certain regulations in the zoning ordinance that say, you know, you're, you need to have these minimum yards, you can have the maximum floor area, so you can have a maximum-sized building on the lot, let's just simplify it by saying that. But if you meet certain parameters, like you're respecting the minimum, minimum requirements for, you know, for a building and the maximum requirements for a building, and you have all your parking, if you are listed in the table of uses that says this use is allowed in that district, you can build that thing that you want to do without any approvals from the plan commission or zoning board or city council. So it's, you, essentially, by right is, in that district, you do not have to jump through any additional hoops to do the thing you want to do. through any additional hoops to do the thing you want to do.
So, my, so, my understanding then is that if someone buys a particular parcel, R2 or R3 parcel, they can by right tear the house down and build a duplex?
That is correct in the R3 district. That is not correct in the R2 district. In the R2 district, you would need a conditional use permit to build a duplex, which would typically be something you would, you would want to get that conditional use permit before you go tearing down the building that exists on the lot. And that has to go through our zoning board of appeals, and it has to meet three criteria.
So, my question then is why, if there is already an avenue to go around the by right of everything, at least with R2, then why are we trying to change the zoning for this? For this specifically thing? It's not even like, it seems like it's more specifically about duplexes than anything.
It is. It's definitely about duplexes because currently, you also, you also have to meet minimum lot size and lot width requirements in either of those two districts that are larger than you would need to do anything else in those districts. So, so, that's what we're trying to get rid of with this text amendment is just those additional lot size requirements, which seem to run counter to the intent of the district. So, when a district says we should allow duplexes, in, you know, in R2, you have certain restrictions, but it says you should allow some duplexes. In R3, it says you should allow duplexes by right. And then, we have an additional layer that says, but you need a lot that's extra-large. You're eliminating, well, in the R2 district, you're eliminating half the lots in the city currently. In the R3 district, you're eliminating 40% of the lots. So, this text amendment is really just about eliminating the additional width and area requirements to open the possibility that duplexes are, you know, would be allowed on these lots in a district where the district says they should be allowed. So, that was kind of long-winded.
And still confusing. What I wanted to, what I need to understand is, R3 lots, you're saying, if you want to build a duplex on a R3 lot, you, the lot is big enough that you can build, just build a duplex there? If it's a R2 parcel, then you have to get the special condition stuff, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're trying to get to, but currently, we have the additional, the additional requirements for the lot area.
For which, R3 or R2?
For both.
Okay, for both. And the, so, the additional, the additional requirements are different for each, for, depending on the size of the parcel?
No, no, the additional requirements just say, if you have, they say, if you have a, essentially, if you have a new lot, you have to have 80, it has to be 80 feet wide, and you have to have 9,000 square feet to do a duplex in either of those districts. Or, if you have an older lot, it has to be 60 feet wide or 6,000 square feet. So, we're just trying to say we should get rid of those additional requirements. And then, if you meet all of the other, you know, minimum, minimum regulations and maximum regulations and parking, then you can do a duplex, again, with a conditional use permit in the R2.
So, this is more about R3 lots than R2?
I wouldn't say that. It's, I mean, it's about both of them, because both of the districts say there should be duplexes allowed at some level. If this passes, it would certainly be easier to build duplexes in R3 districts versus R2. But, I mean, currently, that's also the case, since in R3 it's...
And what I understand, Kevin, is that you're saying that the requirements for, on a R3 lot should not be as huge as they are. You want to make, take the square footage down some or whatever. You want to take what the requirements are for duplex on a R3 lot down some, and you want to kind of codify that if it's a R2 lot, that it can be done by right?
No, no. We're not, we're not trying to make it by right in the R2 district. All we're trying to do in both districts is just get rid of that additional area and width requirement. So, you'd still need to get a conditional use in R2.
Okay, okay. I think I understand a little better.
Okay.
Chandra, do you have any questions?
No.
And Grace, I'm sorry, did you have any additional questions between, before I turn to folks here?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Als.
So, Kevin, help me understand a little bit. I pulled up, and, you know, I want the zoning sheet, so I pulled up the zoning sheet for R2. And very clearly on that zoning sheet, it specifies the floor area ratio, the setback stuff. It says in the sheet that the minimum lot size, square feet, is 6,000 square feet, and the minimum average width in feet is 60.
That's correct, for new lots.
So, this is only for new lots?
Yes. So, one thing that's been on the books, and...
That's not clear to me in this zoning sheet.
Yeah, yeah. So, one thing that's been on the books since 1950 in one form or another, and there were, there were text amendments that added additional districts to it. But essentially, what they tried to write in 1950, and then they added to it, but the effect was always the same. It was, if you, if you have an existing lot, it doesn't need to meet the minimum width or area requirements, since back then, I think it was written by, you know, people who like to be verbose and, you know, use lots of words and things. But one other thing we're, we're trying to do with this text amendment is just to clarify that. That's why the title was also to clarify parts of Section 63. In a, in a big, long paragraph, it was saying, if you have an existing lot, you have no minimum lot width or area. But if you have a new lot, it's got to be, in these, in this case, 6,000 square feet, 60 feet wide. So, we're cleaning up that paragraph to just say, if you have a lot that already exists, there's no minimum requirements. If you create a new lot, you have to meet the minimum area and width requirements.
So, going back to the by right, if you have an existing lot and it has a apartment building on it, it's not zoned for an apartment building, but it's got an apartment building on it, and it burns down, what can you do?
So, that's an existing, non-conforming use. And if it burns down, so, if it burns completely down, you have to do something that's only allowed in that zoning ordinance.
In the zoning district.
In the zoning district now, yeah.
Okay.
So, if you have a non-conforming apartment building, it burns completely down, you've got to replace it with something that conforms to our current zone.
And if that is the case, does then the 6,000 square feet, what I'm getting at here is, it seems odd to me for us to wholesale change the zoning and not, at least if we're going to change it, put it in alignment with what we expect today, which is 6,000 square feet.
What we expect today is that if you have an existing lot, you can reuse it, because that's what's, what's in the zoning ordinance right now in confusing form. But that's, that's the expectation now, is that if you have a lot that exists, you can use it for anything that's allowed in that district. It doesn't need to meet a minimum requirement.
Okay. So, I mean, Grace's question about the restrictions in some regards wasn't entirely clarified, right? So, if you have an existing lot and you have an existing use, you don't, whatever the regulations were at that time is what you had to build it from. So, if it was 4,000 square feet, whatever it was, that's what you had to adhere to. And we're not saying, oh, by the way, you guys now need to buy 20 feet because you're not 60 feet wide.
Correct, yeah.
Right? Okay, so, but there are rules in terms of what, you know, the size now if they build them. So, I'm just trying to make that distinction, because Grace's question was, any single-family doesn't need any of these requirements, which is not entirely accurate.
An existing, single-family lot does not need to meet these requirements. However, if it was a lot that was platted in the last 50 years, it will have met those minimum requirements anyway. So, the, the reason we allow, or the reason we don't have minimums for existing lots is because you have neighborhoods like East Urbana over here that were, you know, they were...
Sure.
Platted before there were any requirements. So, it's not penalizing you for trying to build something new on one of those lots.
Right. And I'm not suggesting that we penalize people for older lots by any sorts of imagination. So, then, you had given us a new sheet where you compare the sizes, but then you also talked about the 50 feet by 5,000 square feet and 50 feet wide. But in this proposal here, page 12, what you have here is what the original proposal was. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, it's not, it's not showing us, if you did this compromise, then it would go from, pre-1970 would be 6,000 square feet, it would now be 5,000 square feet if it was R2?
Mm-hmm.
And would it be 5,000 square feet if it was R3?
Yes.
Okay. So, it would go from 6,000, R2, to 5,000, and then 50 feet from 60 feet, right? And then, 9,000 would go down to 60. And so, there's a bigger change for any lots that were platted after 1970?
I'm not sure I totally follow you. So, so, with the, yeah, and I can't, I can't edit this on the fly, but essentially, we'd be saying that... Yeah, so, to establish a duplex on any lot, regardless of when it was created, you would need to meet, so, I guess it would be, you know, existing lots, this would be 5,000 square feet, this would be 50 feet.
Correct.
And then, for new lots, it would still be 6,000 and 60.
Right. So, my point was, was that in your column, post-1970, that's the biggest difference between the 9 and the 5,000. That was my point.
Okay.
So, the biggest difference would be in those R3s. That would be the biggest change.
Yeah, okay, sure, yes.
Right. And then, on to R2 and conditional use permits. So, you had mentioned, and you have provided us some examples of different houses that could be built by right versus ones that are duplex in R2. And you give the three conditional use permit criteria for everybody. And so, the third one that you referenced is, it preserves the essential character of the district in which it is located. So, my question to you is, if we decide to change the extra additional requirements for the lot width and the square footage for R2, is that a viable argument that somebody could make? So, if somebody said, this is a 40-foot, let's just pretend for the moment that it stays as is, which means there's no additional lot width. Somebody comes in and says, I want to build a duplex, and it's 40 feet wide and 4,000 square feet, and the neighborhood comes out and says, that's not a large enough lot to have that kind of building on it. Is that a viable thing that people could argue? Or because we've changed this, now it's not something that can be part of that equation?
Yeah, in that case, the whole lot size, the area and width would, I would not consider that to be part of the, to be part of the criteria, because, because the essential character, to me, is, is what the things look like. That seems to be what people care about a lot, is what the buildings actually look like. And the essential character of some of these older neighborhoods is that they have some duplexes on smaller lots, or existing lots.
All right, so, just so I can understand correctly. So, if, if, if a group of neighbors decide that they want to protest, or they want to give, they want to give testimony at a zoning board of appeals, and they say, this is, this lot's just too small to have a duplex, that would not be appropriate criteria for the zoning board to say, we're not going to allow this conditional use permit? That, that's what I heard you say, is that right?
Correct, because if...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
Any other questions? James?
Thank you. So, I have a couple of questions. You may have been here when the public comment went on.
I was.
Someone talked about...
Yes.
The fact that there appears to be, they have seen a duplex that is two buildings, and our ordinance requires that it's one building. Do you know the example that they're referring to and how that happened?
Yeah, I do. So, we've had several of those examples, and right now, they are correct. A duplex must be in one building. So, for the examples that, that she may have been talking about, I know, well, the couple that I'm aware of, they had to get a conditional use permit, because we didn't consider them a duplex. We considered them to be two single-family homes on one lot, and to do two homes on one lot requires a conditional use permit. So, those weren't allowed by right, even though they were in the, they were in the R3 district, which would allow a duplex by right. But since it was two separate houses, they had to go through the zoning board and get conditional use permits.
And that wasn't a major variance requirement, to build two houses on the same, on one lot?
I don't think there were any variances in either of those, because they met the minimum yards and they had enough room for parking. They met all the other requirements. They didn't, you know, they didn't build two really large buildings, which probably, you know, would have required a variance, so...
So, right now, in R3, it's easier to do that than to build a duplex?
In certain places, it is, because the lot is not big enough, and you would have to get a major variance for the lot size. So, yeah, so, I suppose right now, there is, the easier path is, is to do two separate buildings rather than a duplex in many cases.
And in our current zoning world, if I buy a single-family house and I put an extra door into it and add an extra kitchen without, like, building a duplex, is that considered creating a duplex?
No. So, to be a duplex, you would have to have, you have to have separate entrances, you have to have totally separate, you know, separated units, and you have to have a kitchen, you have to have a bathroom, and you have to have sleeping quarters.
So, I assume we have a number of single-family houses that fall under that kind of description, where it's been cut into two or three or even more apartments? Essentially, how's that different from, if you do that, if you look at creating two apartments out of one single-family home, how's that different from building a duplex?
Well, I, I don't know that that's different, but if they were, if somebody were to do that, well, first, they would need to apply for building permits. This is, this is all, this is all in the ideal world, right?
Right, yeah.
Because a lot of these were, you know, sometimes, you talk to our building safety folks, they, they have examples of people doing this without permits, and then we have to retroactively tell them, you actually need to apply for a conditional use permit or to do whatever is needed to actually bring that up to our standards. But, yes, you could take, say, you had an R3 lot and it met the minimum size requirements for a duplex, and you wanted to... and you wanted to split a single home into two units. You could do that by right as long as you met all of our other development regulations.
Because that's not changing the footprint of, of the original building?
Right.
Okay, and so if I have a house where there's room for me to add a, let's say, two small rooms on the back and give it its own door and call it a caregiver apartment, is that creating a duplex?
If it, if it had its own kitchen and its own bathroom and its own sleeping quarters and it were separated from the house and met whatever building, building code requirements they needed to do, that, that would be considered a duplex.
What if I converted the basement so that it had an entrance and egress windows and-
Yes.
Called that a caregiver apartment?
That's another way to, to build a duplex, yes.
But those would be considered creating a duplex?
Those would definitely be duplexes.
And, okay, so we, and we're, we're pretty sure we have a handle on how much that has happened since 1970, '76?
I mean, we, I, I can't speak to, you know, to, to building safety and how many of these they find, but when we find them, we, we make sure they go through and, you know, the proper steps to get approved.
A caregiver apartment would not need to go through the rental registration process, right? Because that's not a-
If it's not a rental unit, no.
It's not a rental apartment, it's a, okay. So I think that's all of my questions, thank you.
Chris?
So Kevin, you mentioned in R2 currently, 3% or 49 duplexes are in R2 right now. And 9% in R3, and I forget the number, but around 90 or something like that?
Oh, yeah, I can find that for you, but-
That's right.
Okay.
The question is, is, is there any data that identifies who moved in to those duplexes? And why I ask that is that you mentioned you're anticipating, speculating that there'll be this chain effect where people will move out of older single-family units and move into the duplexes for a variety of reasons, either senior citizens or, you know, however it is. But you're expecting people here will move out of already single-family units that are affordable and move into the new construction duplexes. Is there data to support that? Or is that just a common sense expectation?
I mean, we, we don't keep tabs on who moves where. So we don't, we don't have any data on that. I think we just wanted to throw out, there are, you know, life is complex. So there are many different living situations that, that arise. So, you know, it's not just going to be one type of person renting however many new, new units get built.
Well, therefore, there's no single scenario that's likely to happen. And you offered us a single scenario, which is this chain effect of people here moving out of single-family homes into duplexes if they were available. That's what you said.
I was citing a study that found that to be the case.
Okay, okay, but not a local study?
Not a local study.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice?
Since you pulled the records from the Cunningham Township, were you able to estimate how many duplex we have in the city of Urbana? Total number regardless of what the zoning is?
I may have pulled that, but I don't have it in front of me.
I think one of the arguments is that we need to diversify the housing. So I think it would be good to understand what that looks like, right? We just need to know how many duplexes we have.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Anyone interested in making a motion on this item? If there's no motion, it just dies here, right?
That is correct.
Just making sure to give time for folks on the phone because there can be a delay.
Point of order, could the folks on the phone say something so we knew they're still able to talk?
We'll just do it by person. Grace, can you confirm you're still there? Chandra, are you there?
Chandra did leave the meeting, but that is separate from this.
Okay, Sharice, are you still there? Seems like we have lost people on the phone again. Do we need to take another recess? Okay, so for folks on the phone, in case you can hear me, it sounds like maybe you can't. Okay, we'll figure out how to let them know how to join us back. Okay, we're hearing folks should be back. Sharice, are you there?
I'm here. We couldn't hear you guys.
How about Grace? Grace, are you there?
Yes.
And Chandra, don't forget Chandra.
Oh, Sharice, I think I hear you. Can you confirm that you can hear us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can hear you.
Thank you.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, barely, but we can hear you. Grace, are you back?
Yes.
Okay, so do either of you have any additional questions for Kevin?
Uh, no, I would like to make a motion when we're ready.
I think you said you want to make a motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Grace.
I move approval on the regular-
Oh, we can't hear what your motion is.
Can you hear me now?
Not really. Is there any way on our end we can turn this up? Because we really can't hear. Okay, we're going to try again. We'll try Grace first this time. Can you hear us and can you say something?
Nothing, I can hear you, can you hear me?
I don't think it's any better. Sharice, are you there, just so we know?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Well, I got my mouth right next to the, my, the speaker on the phone. So, and I'm on a landline, so let me make a difference.
Okay. Grace, you want to try again, just in case?
Yes.
Oh, that's so much better, okay, go for it.
Oh my gosh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry if there was a problem on my end. Thought I was doing the best. Um, okay, I would like to move. Can you still hear me?
Hmm, ish.
I'd like to move, ordinance number 2024-11-034. Ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance. Update section 6.3 for clarity and to remove additional lot area with requirements for certain uses, plan case number 2493-T-2/4.
Was that for approval or?
Yes, approval on the regular city council agenda.
Approval on the regular agenda moved by Grace, is there a second? So point of order, I can second, but I just have to pass the chair for discussion, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I will second that motion. So moved by Grace, seconded by myself, I'd like to open it up for discussion. Mary Alice?
I guess I can get us started. I, so there's a couple of concerns that I have with this. Number one, we are changing the rules for all of the city of Urbana. And I know I talked about this in the past. But whenever we do that, we need to be really sure that we don't have any unintended consequences. And as I think about what, what needs do we have with housing in our city? Really, the needs in our city are affordable housing. So places that people can rent that are affordable. But also the affordable housing that people can buy for the first time. So single-family residents that somebody can get into the market. And those two things are the things that are the most challenging in our city because things, prices just keep going up everywhere, right? I feel like this is going to have the unintended consequence of taking some of those houses that might be starter homes for people off into development, into duplexes and so forth. And I'll give you one example. So I know I've said this many times, but I live in an area that has lots of different kinds of housing just on my block. I have a, a rooming house right next to me. That rooming house went for $150,000 more than if it was a single-family because it was being marketed as a rental. And so those boost the prices, which of course are going to cut out people from the actual market. So I have concerns about that. I have concerns with the fact that we do have a process in place right now. And, you know, that process, while not many people have availed themselves of it, they have done it, they have gone to the zoning board of appeals, they've asked for variances, they've asked for conditional use permits. So it's not that we aren't allowing it, right? What we're doing is we're saying in some cases, this might not be appropriate. So specifically, if we look at R2 for a moment, where a conditional use permit is required. If, if the conditional use permit is required, that means that it's not a by right, which is good. But it also means what do the people in that area have the ability to come and say if they are for or against the conditional use permit? And that's what we're changing here, we're changing those rules. And I think that that is something that we really need to think heavily about. For the R3, I, I do hear the need for the fact that it says, "single-family duplex" because usually the title of a zoning description is going to be what you intend for it to be there. So I can hear a little bit of that. I am not opposed to decreasing it to 6,000 square feet, which would be the existing size of the lot, not down to 5,000. I do take a little offense at us being told that we're doing exclusionary zoning when in essence, all zoning is exclusionary. Zoning is a description of what can happen in a particular district. And so I'm not saying that these certain duplexes shouldn't be allowed in R2 and R3. I'm saying that there are circumstances, especially in R2, where they could be allowed and given opportunity for the neighborhoods and so forth to come in and say whether or not they're for or against something. I think duplexes are a great option. I'm not saying duplexes shouldn't be allowed in the city. I think they should be allowed in the city. Somebody actually just sent me an email telling me about Nick Hanson's News Gazette article that says that there were 395 duplexes, 1,643 single-family homes, these are all in the rental registration, and 8,771 apartment units. Now, as, as we heard, not everything is going to be in the rental registration depending on who owns it and who's living there and so forth. But at minimum, we have that amount. So at minimum, we have about, a little over a third of the structures that are available between, compared to single-family versus duplexes. So we do have some mix there, really. I mean, I just want to kind of summarize and say, the biggest need in our community is a need for the ability for people to afford an apartment to rent and for the ability to buy a new starter home. And I don't think that this change solves either of those problems.
Any other comments? James?
Hiya. Pretty similar place to where Mary Alice is. Some of the things that come to mind here is, I, I'm not in support of doing this right now. I think there can be further discussion about, about doing this for R3. I'm not there at the moment. I, I do think it's changing the rules. There, we have, we have operated since at least 1979 under this model and, and people have accepted that. We've been under the current comprehensive plan since 2005, that's what I just heard. And there has been no pressure. I mean, this city thinks about housing. There has been advocacy for housing in the long term. It's been on people's minds. There hasn't been an urgency on this before it came to council this time. I don't think there's an urgency. I've, I've heard in the description of the impacts, maybe a little one way, maybe a little other way, we think it'll go this way. The, the impacts don't seem like they will be expansive. They will be small or incremental. That also says to me, there's not an urgency to do this right now because it won't solve any of the problems we're trying to solve in, any faster than taking a look at the big picture. We have a comprehensive plan that's about to be released. We have talked about, at least I recall hearing about revamping our overall ordinance, zoning ordinance. As soon as that was done, that, sure, that may be three years, that might be five years. But because, you know, this has sat for 20 years and it's not been an issue under the current comprehensive plan, I'm not uncomfortable with doing that. The other thing we have on our radar is doing a housing inventory. And I would feel much better about making this decision, and that's something we can do in a shorter, shorter timeline, having that kind of detail. You asked the question, you got it via email as we were going forward here, but we didn't have all that information in front of us. So at this point, I'm, I'm probably, I'm voting no on this now. That doesn't mean I wouldn't support some changes in the future as part of a comprehensive plan change, as part of a zoning ordinance overhaul. And definitely with more information on our inventory and what we think the impacts are. Chris asked a very good question about, you know, do we have data to show that any of these things that we hope would happen, would happen? I don't feel like we do. I, I feel like we could get it and then, then I, then I could be persuaded because I can, I can be persuaded by data. So at this point, I'm going to vote no and, and that's the reason why.
Any other discussion in chambers before we switch to the phone? So Chris, do you have anything you want to say before? Okay, you said Chandra's no longer on. Sharice, do you have any, anything you want to share?
What I wanted to share is basically what, what James and, and Mary Alice just said is that I, I need more information, I need to be able to understand. I've kind of got a phobia where, where folks use the words "by right" now. And I want to understand, there's not a rush for this, or at least it doesn't seem to be one. And I think that it's, right now, it's not an exclusionary, there's not an exclusionary zoning as far as I can tell because there are other steps that can be taken for a person to build what they are saying they want to build on particular lots. So I, I would really like to see how the, the new comprehensive plan aligns with this before I could say yes to it. And that's my, that's the reason why I'm not voting for it. I'm going to be voting no on this.
Grace?
Yes, I have comments.
Go ahead whenever you're ready.
How's the volume now?
It is okay.
Okay, thank you. Please feel free to interrupt if you can't hear me to save some talking. I think there's already been a lot of points made on this issue. And I appreciate you-
Grace, I think we just lost you, are you still there? I think we lost Grace. Hopefully, we can get her reconnected. Mary Alice, would you take the chair so I can make a comment?
Sure, I'll take the chair and the chair recognizes Jaya.
Thank you. So I, I hear the, the desire for more information and to be part of, you know, the next round. So, I hear the desire for more information and to be part of, you know, the next round of our comprehensive plan. I have concerns anytime the answer is, this is how we've always done it. So, I hear that concern that folks are raising of, you know, it's been working. Has it? I think we've heard a lot of evidence that suggests that the current model isn't working. And I, you know, I appreciate the focus on data. I think we've been provided a lot of information. I think the national conversation is also really focused on the need for infill as an equity issue. So, I'm a little concerned that that seems to be just kind of being dismissed because Urbana is a progressive city and I don't think our ordinances support that in some instances. I'm not saying that this has to be the change, but to see it just die here is disappointing to me. And I say that partially because I hear people saying, well, we need rentals for really low-income people, we need starter homes for folks. Those things are true. But even anecdotally, you know, if we're going to look at that realm, because I'm hearing some of that, I think about the folks who live on my street, who have been renting, who can't afford to rent the houses they've been renting anymore. There isn't a natural next step, right? Unless they go into some tiny little place that isn't meant for a family. So, us saying something that, you know, according to the definition of a zone, if we're looking at R3, should be allowable, which could create an opportunity for folks who have been living in single-family houses as rentals, who can now no longer afford to do so? It's disappointing to me that we're not, to me, having a more robust conversation about how do we solve that? If this isn't the solution, what is? I think the request from staff in terms of better guidance, if this is not the solution that we want, is very fair. Because I don't think it's just the very low-income or the starter-home folks who are suffering right now in our community in terms of lack of housing. I think it's happening at a lot of different levels. And if you've looked anytime recently, there's not a lot out there, and there's certainly not a lot out there for lower-to-middle-class income folks in Urbana who want to stay in Urbana. So, you know, I hear kind of the direction things are going, but I do think that our residents and the city staff deserve a good answer as to why this is dying here and what the heck we're going to do to make sure that there is housing for folks across the board. That's it.
Would you like the chair back?
Yes, please.
All right, I relinquish the chair.
Thank you. Grace, I think you might be back. Are you there?
I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I echo, I think, some of your sentiments there.
And now, we can't hear you.
No. How about now?
I heard the "no" and a very quiet "how about now?" That is a little better, yes.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so sorry for the technical trouble. I think there have already been a lot of points made on this issue. I appreciate the input from the public and staff and other council members. I think that overall, this does not substantially change any of the allowances. Still the same in R2 and R3. We're only changing a width requirement for existing lots, which does not apply to single-family homes for that same lot size in existence. This, to me, just removes an arbitrary regulation on duplexes at best. We can't confirm where or why this even came from in the first place. And I think at worst, a remnant of a "placis, ritis, not-in-my-backyard" type policy in zoning from the '70s. So, I don't understand why we would just accept this model from the '70s just because that's how it's been and why we would require a major variance for an arbitrary requirement at best. I think that the zoning allowances are somewhat independent of the choices of individuals and trends of the free market. For example, we were asked what the rental prices on duplexes would be, but this is not an affordable housing project like some others, such as one later on tonight's agenda, which we support, and that is an important question. This is a different question on zoning, and the same potential applies to single-family homes. As we've heard, someone could rent out a four-bedroom, single-family home to individual people, and that isn't covered in anything in the zoning. Any developer could currently tear down a single-family building and build another single-family home or a duplex on many of the lots currently. So, I think that's not an argument of concern. And that people can buy a duplex or rent it just the same as a single-family home. That doesn't imply renter or ownership. That's an independent thing of the zoning and the physical building. And I think it also doesn't inherently mean that many single-family homes will change into duplexes. It just changes an unfair limitation on duplexes compared to single-family homes. We also heard points that historical preservation is somewhat independent system as well and that that's an important mechanism to conserve historical character and landmarks, not through limiting duplexes, and that the R2 zone already requires preserving essential character of a district. So, I still don't see a logical reason why we need to limit the lot on duplexes and not single-family homes in the same area and criteria. I am in favor of the proposed changes as they've been recommended, but it seems like there's not support of that. I think that it's a reasonable compromise, what was proposed, of at least reducing it from 60 feet wide and 6,000 feet total to 50 feet wide and 5,000 feet total. So, I would like to move that we amend this ordinance to change existing lots for duplexes to 50-foot width requirement and 5,000 square feet total, as was proposed as a compromise.
I'll second that amendment as well. So, we'd be voting on the amendment at this point, or do we need any discussion on the amendment?
You would have discussion on the amendment, and I'm just going to ask for clarity for the record that you repeat the amendment.
Sure. Grace, are you able to repeat the amendment, or do you want me to? I need to pull up the exact amount. It's in the staff report today.
If you can hear me, I'm happy to.
Why don't you try while I look for it as a backup?
Okay. I move to amend the ordinance with the staff-proposed compromise, changing 50-foot width and 5,000 square foot total area for duplexes on existing lots in R2 and R3. And feel free to jump in if that wasn't exactly the staff recommendation, but...
It's the recommendation from the staff memo, so it's the 50-foot, 5,000-square-foot minimum as the compromise.
Yes.
Any discussion on the amendment? So, I guess we are voting on the amendment.
Jaya?
Yes.
Can I ask for a roll call vote?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Coisenberry?
No.
That motion fails. Do we need to vote on the original, too? Okay, that's what I thought. Just want to make sure. Okay, so now, voting on the original, do you want to roll call on that one as well? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Coisenberry?
No.
Okay, that motion fails as well. Thank you. We will move on to new business, but I think staff was hoping for some additional guidance on this item.
Well, I do appreciate a motion and a second and there being discussion, but I, there's a lot of people who have been involved in shaping this after it came forward, and I just feel like I want to share a little bit about the message that this is sending to staff. So, this is people who have been invested in the comp plan and just that whole effort. We brought this forward at this time because this is minor. This is moving very, very incrementally in a direction, and that direction has been established for a long time in Urbana. It exists in the existing comprehensive plan. We tried to knit together how it is being carried forward, probably in a more explicit way in the Imagine Urbana. And the message that this whole effort has, and the outcome that is sending to staff is sending to me, and I think I speak for staff on this, is that the council is not ready to do big things to implement the comprehensive plan. And so, that saddens me for what we have ahead because there's a lot of work, and the Imagine Urbana has come from the people of Urbana. It's not staff putting words in the mouth of our residents. This is what the people have said they wanted. It's not different than what we've done before. They articulated in a plainer way, in an easier way to understand about what kind of a city they want to live in. And I don't have a lot of optimism about our ability to actually make the change that people want to see when something this minor...
I'm sorry, point of order. I don't think we're allowed to discuss something after the vote.
Darcy, can you clarify that?
We, discussion has ended for this item as we have voted. Chair Colasetti did ask if further guidance or clarification was needed for staff.
I'm sharing this because I'm saying we're adrift at this point about what the intentions of council are to implement the comprehensive plan when we bring that before you. And if we need new direction on what the policies that are going to be, that you are already aware of, that we've shared out of the proposed Imagine Urbana, then please give us new direction because I don't think we'll be able to implement what we have been putting forward.
Perhaps a future discussion item on that then, since this is no longer within the scope of the item that was on the agenda.
Okay, I appreciate the chair giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. We will go ahead and move on to new business and look at that as an item of future business. So, the first item under new business is Resolution Number 2024-12-080R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for the design and construction of improvements to Wright Street between the City of Champaign and the City of Urbana.
Good evening, everyone. I'm stepping in for city engineer this evening on this. This item documented in your packet, the specifics of this is this is a joint venture between us and the City of Champaign as Wright Street basically is where our two cities align. We have a joint right-of-way through there that goes smack dab down the middle. This is part of Champaign's proposed resurfacing program for the upcoming year, and they coordinated with us to see if we wanted to integrate and work on this section of Wright Street together. The section of Wright Street that this is discussing is just north of OSF between Church...
Just a moment. I'm sorry, we're about to temporarily lose quorum. Nope, not without a recess. I'm so sorry.
This will basically be along Wright Street from Church Street up to Dublin. Champaign will be the lead agency on this, and the agreement would be for them to run the engineering that would, then we would review and approve, and then go out to bid, have the construction performed, and then they would seek reimbursement from us for our portion of that work. The intent for this section is resurfacing of the roadway. It's in pretty poor condition. It's a major collector. It's a bus route. Originally, I think the intention within our CIP included doing some improvements at the grade, there's a railroad grade crossing right in that section as well. But my understanding is actually the railroad has done that work themselves independently, so likely we'll see reduced overall cost in the project as a whole. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions? We'll start here in chambers this time.
Tim?
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Sharice.
Well, because this is basically my ward. You're saying that the repair is going to go from Church Street up through Dublin?
Correct.
And it's just going to be on the Urbana side because Champaign is already doing that or working on it? I know that there have been a lot of repaired signs and all that.
Yeah, it's...
White and Bezlin type of, you know, at Wright Street and everything. So, I was wondering, are they currently doing the repair or they will be doing the repair?
They will be doing. Some of what you've probably seen is they've done a significant portion of pavement patching along this stretch on the Champaign side. And now, they're really kind of coordinating with us to do the full width of the roadway together. I'm sharing on the screen now kind of an overlay of the areas that will be improved with this, as you can see, starting down at Church, excluding the railroad crossing, which has now been improved by the railroad through Hill Street, Bezlin, and then up to Columbia and the Dublin intersection there, which will be, that intersection will be concrete to accommodate heavy vehicle turning movements as this is a bus route.
Right. Okay, okay. Thanks for that information.
Yep.
Any other questions, Sharice?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. We'll stick with folks on the phone. Grace, do you have any?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Tim, could you please clarify that this is just approving the IGA, that there's no fiscal impact? This was already budgeted and expected to be below what we already budgeted?
That's correct. This would just be approving the IGA to work with Champaign on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Grace?
No.
I think that was a no. Any questions here in chambers? Is there a motion? Mary Alice?
Um...
Oh, Sharice, go ahead.
My computer just went into that rainbow ball of death. I can't get it to go.
Do you want Mary Alice to go ahead and make the motion then? I'm going to suggest Mary Alice go ahead.
All right. I will move on to the consent agenda at the next city council meeting, Resolution Number 2024-12080R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for the design and construction of improvements to Wright Street between the City of Champaign and the City of Urbana.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Grace.
Just wanted to say that I appreciate the coordination here and that there isn't a visual difference or quality difference on one side of the street versus the other. I think it says a lot about our community and the coordination between Champaign, Urbana, Savoy, the university, that if someone's driving around for the first time, they don't know necessarily if you're in Champaign or Urbana or anywhere else in the end of our area. And I think that this is a great way to keep that going. So, I appreciate the coordination on that and hope it continues to turn out to be below budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sorry, was this, you said this is to the consent agenda, correct? Okay. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. I think there's a need for a short recess. Can we take a 10-minute, come back at 9 o'clock? So, move...
We have to vote.
Okay, it is 9 o'clock. We'll come out of recess and move on to Resolution Number 2024-12-081R, a resolution to endorse the Champaign-Urbana Urban Area Transportation Study, KUAT's Long Range Transportation Plan, LRTP 2050. Tim?
Good evening, council. This is just kind of a follow-up on our LRTP 2050 presentation that KUAT's representatives gave, I believe, on November 12th. They kind of went over some of the different long-term planning things, kind of the general oversights of these things. Just in short, brief summary, this encompasses everything within our CIP for the next five years, and then much beyond that, even unfunded things in the future. You know, some of the various Lincoln Avenue corridor studies that are ongoing that you guys are aware of, you know, future Washer to Clarny improvements, a lot of larger arterial-type projects that, you know, generally we don't have funding readily available for, that we're seeking grants for. It also includes a number of illustrative projects throughout the region, not just within Urbana, but throughout the county and the NPO area. You know, some of those things are very much illustrative where there's no regular planning happening for them, but they are concepts that we want to have on our radar. In the event that things change, growth happens and/or funding... In the event that things change, growth happens and/or funding opportunities are presented that are good options for those things. So that's all encompassed within the LRTP 2050. The ask tonight is just for council to endorse that this, this has been completed with staff input with both technical committee representation and policy committee representation at the, the Metropolitan Planning Organization level through KUATs, and, you know, I'd just welcome any other feedback from, from you all. One other thing, just to highlight kind of some of the core things with the LRTP 2050, I've got the presentation that, or that KUATs provided, but the, the top five goals are safety, reliability, sustainability, equity and quality of life, and connectivity. So a lot of what is in this that is either funded or on the outskirts of being funded are, you know, really a focus on managing a lot of the things we have better and then keeping some of the, the growth opportunities and things still, still documented on the outskirts, but they're more unfunded illustrative projects.
Any questions? Sharice and Grace, do you have any questions and are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here and no, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
I'm here and only question is if you can hear me better now.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no questions, is there a motion? Mary Alice?
I will move Resolution Number 2024-12081R, Resolution to Endorse the Champaign-Urbana Urban, Urban Area Transportation Study, otherwise known as KUAT's Long Range Transportation Plan for 2050. I'm going to put that on the regular agenda in case there's other questions that come up.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chris. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. I believe that passes, but can I just confirm from Sharice and Grace how you voted because I couldn't hear?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, aye.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Number 2024-12-082R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement Regarding the Use of Home Funds on behalf of the City of Champaign, Illinois, Parker Glen Phase Two, FY 2024, 2025. I've got Braden.
Good evening, everyone. I will be discussing the next, these next two resolutions concurrently, but if you have any questions about them individually, I'm happy to answer them as well. So the attached resolutions authorize staff to execute agreements with the City of Champaign and with Wuda Cooper Companies Incorporated for the development of affordable housing as part of the Parker Glen Phase Two Development Project. Under the terms of these agreements, which are in your packet, the Urbana Home Consortium will commit up to $50,000 in City of Champaign home funds for the construction of two residential buildings comprised of 56 units, which will include one, two, and three-bedroom affordable rental apartments. This development will be located in the City of Champaign, and just as a reminder, the Urbana Home Consortium, which consists of Urbana, Champaign, and the county, receives federal HUD dollars through the home program, which we share collaboratively. Urbana's the lead entity, so we're responsible for executing agreements with home funds, but these, these specific home funds were previously budgeted to the City of Champaign for use for affordable housing projects in the City of Champaign. This is similar to the resolutions that you approved back in August for Bristol Place Phase Two Senior Developments, which was another affordable housing development in Champaign that Champaign used their home funds to support. So the total project cost for Parker Glen is estimated to be around $18.7 million. Again, Wuda Cooper Companies Incorporated is the developer that will be developing these affordable units. Wuda Cooper did receive low-income housing tax credit, did receive a low-income housing tax credit award from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, which will also be supporting the development of this project. So in the memo, there's some information about affordability, so as with all of our affordable housing development projects through the home program, maximum tenant income cannot exceed 80% of the area median income, which is how HUD determines low income, and monthly rent will not be able to exceed the rental limits that you see in the packet for the one, two, and three-bedroom units. And just as a note, those are the caps, right? So those, that, that's the maximum amount that tenants would be able to be charged for rent. The low-income housing tax credit requirements, however, state that income cannot exceed 30% of a, of a tenant's income, just to ensure affordability and to ensure that low-income clients are being served. The home funds come with a 20-year affordability period, which means for 20 years, those affordability requirements will have to be in place, but just as a note, the low-income housing tax credit program has a 30-year affordability period, so it'll actually be longer than that 20 years, but that, under the home regulations, that 20 years is what we impose, but they will be under the affordability guidelines for at least 30 years. The anticipated construction date is April 2025, and there's a target completion date of June 2026. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I'll also introduce Omar Sarig, who is with the Wuda Cooper, who can answer any questions about the development that I do not have an answer to, so, thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, Bernard. Remind me again, the one-bedroom is 890 a month, what is it?
That's the cap.
That's the cap.
It cannot exceed that.
Can't exceed that?
Correct.
It could be lower?
It could, yes. It could be lower because when they do client selection, the, the rent can't exceed 30% of their income.
Right.
So there, there is that flexibility. It just can't exceed that number.
So if I walk in with an SSI check of $900, they're going to let me live there for 300 bucks?
I, I believe so, that, that's how the program is structured. There are specifications in terms of how many units need to be set aside for different, so for example, 80% AMI, 50% AMI, so there are kind of numbers of units that are set aside for people at different levels of the affordability. So that would be considered someone who is very low-income, so there, there may be units set aside for them, but it, it kind of depends on the mix that the developer negotiates with the Illinois Housing Development Authority.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions here in chambers? Grace, any questions?
Um, do you know if there's a location planned, I guess?
The location?
Likely not relevant, but I guess just curious.
You're coming in and out a little bit now, just so you know, Grace.
So I heard you ask about location, so it is located off North Neal Street in Champaign. So Phase One of Parker Glen was completed last year, so it's a set of apartment buildings off North Neal Street, just north of where, in that residential area, north of where the Hobby Lobby is located. There is a bus line, it's next to a Champaign Park District Park. Again, it's a residential area, and Phase One, like I said, was completed last year, and so this will just be an addition to that existing affordable development. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. And it sounded like earlier you were saying that not all of the apartment units would be held to this affordability?
All of the units will be held to the affordability regulations for 30 years.
Okay, at that 80% AMI in the table that was included? Thank you.
Sharice, do you have any questions?
Um, no, I don't, not at this time.
Can I get a motion? Mary Alice?
All right, and we're doing, I'm going to just do these one by one and then we'll add them to the consent. All right, so this is for the city council consent agenda. I move approval of Resolution Number 2024-12082R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement Regarding the Use of Home Funds on behalf of the City of Champaign, Illinois, Parker Glen Phase Two for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Folks on the phone, any discussion?
No.
I think that was a no. So we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. That motion passes. Is there a motion for the following resolution?
I will move on to the consent agenda at the next city council meeting, Resolution Number 2024-12083R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Rental Housing Development Agreement with Woda Cooper Companies Incorporated for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice, and any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Thank you. All right, we will move on to ordinance number 2024-12-038, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14-7, and Chapter 22, Section 22-102, food licenses and recycling tax.
So this is an odd combination, but I wanted to kind of kill two birds with one stone here. So on November 18th, Tim presented in some detail the options for the recycling tax, and the direction was to continue the weekly curbside collection. So this ordinance would establish the fees that were discussed with council on the 18th, which is a series of increases stepped in over a period of time, and this will also require implementing the 10, 10-cent single-use bag tax would be, which would be implemented on January 1 of 2026. So just, just a note that we, we found when we were looking at this, there was, there was kind of, it had been addressed in kind of an odd way in the code. There's actually a section of the code that pertains to recycling tax, but it referenced the fee schedule. It just made more sense, as we looked at it, to remove the recycling tax from the fee schedule because it is, in fact, defined as a tax elsewhere in the code and not a fee, and so those sections would be removed from the fee schedule and that language would be reflected in Section 2022102, which speaks to the recycling tax. The other thing that is addressed here is some changes in fees for food licenses. So for many years, both the cities of Champaign and Urbana have coordinated with public health, the Public Health District, who actually issues restaurant licenses, licenses on behalf of both communities. As they go through the process of implementing new software and trying to find efficiency improvements in their processes, they would like to get some more uniformity in, in how everyone is doing this. And so this would increase the food handling mobile dispenser license from 61 to $87, which would be consistent with the food handling establishment license, and then it would eliminate the temporary license because public health doesn't actually issue a temporary license. They were only doing that for the City of Urbana, and those changes would be effective when they start their new process in the spring.
Any questions? Chris, go ahead.
Regarding the food licensing, what effect will this have on the Urbana farmer's market? I'm assuming that was created for that, right? I mean, or sort of?
No, I, I don't think it was created for that, but there are certainly food trucks that participate in the farmer's market, if that's what you're talking about. So their license will be $87 next year rather than 61.
That's a full-year license?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's all I got right now.
Any other questions? Chris?
I didn't see in the ordinance where the bag tax was. Will that be filled in or?
Correct, we'll, we'll come back with that at another time.
Oh, we're gonna-
That was, that was not to be effective until 2026 anyhow.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we've still got work to do on that, so we're in the initial steps of some of that now and trying to cull down the list of impacted establishments that may or may not be impacted by this so that we can get a better estimate on who is impacted. Are the criteria that we're using representative of what we as a community want that to represent? Are we capturing the consumers that are using this stuff effectively? But the intent would be is we would, we're going to develop that and then bring that back to you all to basically enact at a later date.
Any other questions here in chambers? Grace, any questions?
Uh, yes, I was wondering if or why we need to set the fee schedule so far out.
Why or if we need to set the fee schedule so far out?
So if we're, if the intention is to, you know, somewhat subsidize this with the plastic, the single-use carryout bag fee, we had to project this out so that we don't run afoul in our fund balance based on the contractual obligations through the five-year term for these services. So that's a balancing act of that, and this is, once we stand up the single-use carryout bag fee, we'll have to revisit what that revenue generation is. Some of these numbers may have to be amended again if, for whatever reason, it, we, we tried to be conservative in what we were doing, so if anything, hopefully we're amending them backwards, not forwards, or down, not up. But we, that's, that's speculation as to what that revenue is going to generate and how long that's going to be, you know, a reliable source. We've projected, based on research, is a lot of these things, they come in, you know, they're, they produce a fair amount of revenue the first year, and then it cuts by 50%, cuts by 50%, cuts by 50%, and then you find some, at some point, it just kind of stabilizes where, you know, people have adjusted their use and/or decided to pay up for those, those services or for single-use carryout bag fees. But that's, that's, you know, we're, we're speculating what that is going to be, so once we get that in place and we have a year's worth of revenue generation, we'll see what subsequent years will need to be, and if, if our assumptions are good, we may not have to come back and adjust anything, and if they're bad in one way or the other, we may be back here talking to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Grace?
No.
I think that was a no. Sharice, any questions?
No, no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I can make another motion.
I can move for-
Oh, there you go.
Oh.
Go for it, Sharice.
Okay, ordinance number 2024-12-038, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14-7, and Chapter 22, Section 22-2, 102, food license and recycling tax for regular agenda for approval at next city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next we have ordinance number 2024-12-039, an ordinance revising the annual budget, ordinance budget amendment number four, omnibus. I'm guessing that's Elizabeth as well.
With an assist from Tim, most likely. So again, another omnibus budget amendment. In the general fund, we would be moving funds from some salary lines where we have savings due to vacant positions- due to vacant positions to allow for one-time cost related to implementing new permitting and licensing software for certain functions within the city. We need additional funds to do this this year because there's some overlap between the old system and the new system, and there are implementation costs. But we've been assured that this can be covered from the normal budget in future years. In the capital improvement fund, we would allocate $100,000 for demolition of the Old Fire Station 3, which is consistent with the plan that you recently approved related to a grocery store in that area. In the stormwater utility fund, $50,000 to fund part of a stormwater management planning project, which would be reallocated from a storm sewer lining project. And in the stormwater fund, $20,000 related to a sanitary planning and GIS project. And I think what happened in that case was the Phase 1 of this project was a little more expensive than anticipated. So essentially, they had to use funds that were needed for Phase 2. Well, now we need to do Phase 2 of the project. And in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, about $20,000 to replace a community development vehicle. This was originally scheduled for replacement way back in 2020. That never happened. So we're catching that up. And then in the TIF fund, there's several adjustments related to capital improvement projects. This is TIF 4, and we're shifting money... Yeah. Do you want to jump in that one?
Sure. So initially, in TIF 4, we tried to get some money in there for various infrastructure needs associated with TIF. And as we've developed these plans, we've had a need for more money within lighting and less money in other areas. Sanitary sewers being one is we haven't recognized any major repair needs at this time. So that is being zeroed out as part of this. The street surface treatment program was not to the magnitude that we had projected. And some of that is based on kind of needs assessments in the area. So that is also being reduced. The big adders, though, then are the street lighting. So along Cunningham Avenue through that whole area. And it's been something that's been looked at historically on a number of different times that the city hasn't had money for. But a lot of the street lighting through there has direct-bury cable and wire. So we're looking to basically install conduit for that, to have protected cable and wire, upgrade the lumineers with all the lighting through that area, and probably replace a handful of poles as well, which is going to be a lot more costly with all of the underground infrastructure installation there. And then the sidewalks have slightly increased, and that's due to some planning along Perkins Road where we're projecting a sidewalk extension further to the east down to the Dog Park.
Any questions? Chris?
A quick one. And you're kind of going to have to indulge me here. I'm playing, as Elizabeth knows, I'm playing amateur budget detective. Remind me again, Tim, the stormwater fee is in the sewage tax, right? I mean, those are combined, right?
It is. People see it on their bill from the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District Bill, which encompasses sanitary sewer fee, stormwater utility fee, recycling fee, and then UCSD's charges for services.
And all that comes as one bill, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Sharice?
No, I don't have any questions.
Grace?
Yes, thank you. Could you clarify with TIF 4, which I really appreciate getting around to spending those funds before...
You're fading. Clarify something.
On TIF 4 funds? That all those funds are within TIF 4?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I will move ordinance Number 2024-12038, An Ordinance Amending the Urbana... Sorry. Wrong one. Let me turn the page. I apologize. All right. Let's try this again. Ordinance Number 2024-12039, An Ordinance Revising the Annual Budget, Ordinance Budget Amendment Number Four, Omnibus to City Council Regular Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chris for the regular agenda. Is there any discussion? Sharice, any discussion?
None from me.
Grace?
No.
Okay. With no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. That motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Number 2024-12-084R, A Resolution Approving an Increase in the Number of Liquor License in the Class P Designation for Satara Gas Inc., Doing Business as Satara Gas Inc., 1821 South Philo Road.
Yes. This is the first of two liquor licenses on the agenda tonight. This is a request for a liquor license by Satara Gas. They have purchased the gas station at the corner of Florida, or at Philo and Colorado. So I think there was some misunderstanding from a speaker during public input earlier this evening. This is not a standalone liquor store. This is a replacement for a previous liquor license at this location. Our city code requires any time a property is sold, their license automatically is nullified, and the new owner has to apply for a new license in their name. So this is replacing a license that previously was at this location. And the gas station has been sold.
All right. We will start with questions on the phone this time. Sharice, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions. I totally understand that this is just kind of more or less like a renewing. It's just that we have, and there's a new owner, therefore, they have to reapply.
Grace, do you have any questions?
Yes. I saw in the memo that the business was sold in August 2024. I was wondering if it's been in operation since then still?
Yes. And they're not allowed to sell alcohol until they get their license. This has been, this has taken longer than usual, just in terms of getting the documentation required. But they cannot sell alcohol until they get the liquor license.
And do you know how vital alcohol sales is to their operation as a gas station?
I don't know what the dollar value of their alcohol sales, but I'm assuming that it is an important part of their operation. But I don't know a dollar value.
Any questions here? Mary Alice?
I would make a motion.
I will take a motion.
All right. I will move Resolution Number 2024-12084R, A Resolution Approving an Increase in the Number of Liquor Licenses in the Class P Designation for Centra Gas Incorporated, Doing Business as Centra Gas Incorporated at 1821 South Philo Road, onto the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Mary Alice?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that I know that we've had a variety of different liquor license applications in the past couple of months. And there was one that came through in a similar area that didn't move forward. And I just wanted to say the reason that I'm willing to support this one is because we're not adding anything here. This is kind of maintaining the status quo. And so for that reason, I'll be in support of this.
James?
Yeah. I just want to say two things. First of all, this is a gas station, but it's also a convenience store. It's been there since I moved into the neighborhood 24 years ago. And so I don't view this as increasing the amount of places that sell liquor in the area, but it's a convenience store. I think it's a, I think that, and a gas station. So I think that is something where people expect to be able to pick things up. And so I will support this. What I want to add is I don't think our current process is serving us from a standpoint of managing the density of liquor sales. What we have is this model where it always looks like we're adding a new liquor license, even if it's an existing business changing hands. And that doesn't tell us a lot about whether it is going to impact a neighborhood by increasing something or whether, over time, that neighborhood has seen a decrease. You might have a perception that there were more establishments there that were selling liquor, and over time, it's gone down. We don't have visibility into that. And I think that puts us in a difficult position from a standpoint of trying to manage the density of the availability of liquor stores in a particular area. If we just do it as a total for the city, and they go up and down based on ownership, I'd like to think about a way to talk about proximity or density in the longer term. I don't have that answer tonight, but I think that contributes to this perception. Even if we were talking about... I wasn't here for the proposal that died for lack of emotion. In the particular space, though, we know that there are some businesses that are moving out of that space. So does that mean that it would be okay to add another one back in because the density was a certain level? Are we trying, are council members looking at goals as far as the density of the availability of liquor stores? That might be fine. But if that's our goal in this conversation or how we choose to approve or not approve a liquor license, I think we need to be more clear about that. I believe that a business should know what they're doing and know what licensing is required. So I'm not being an apologist for the businesses that move forward without the appropriate licensing. But I do think we need to help people understand, in this particular area, what's a likely approval and what's going to be challenging.
Chris?
Yeah. Just to piggyback on some of the thoughts that James mentioned, and that is true. Completely lacking in the process of this distributing liquor is any kind of community impact assessment. And ironically, this same deliberative body 13 years ago criticized the establishment of more liquor places in this particular area. Whether you think it's just replacing a license that was already there or not, you are, in fact, creating another point of distribution for alcohol in that same area, in that density. And we don't know how many places... But, you know, 13 years ago, it was roundly criticized that there were too many liquor distribution points in this particular area. And as I mentioned by email, I'd like to know what the relationship between crime and alcohol is before we make these kind of decisions. So that's just where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Sharice? Any comments?
No.
Grace?
Yes. I agree with some of the thoughts expressed previously. I think for me, the difference with this license versus another one that was proposed is, as was said, the existing business versus adding an entirely new business to that area. And also the fact of selling a variety of goods versus exclusively alcohol sales. I agree that the gas station there is an important part of the business area as far as gas and other goods for purchase. And so that's kind of the point of my question on are the alcohol sales kind of dependent on the continuation of this business in general? And I think for me, that's also an important piece of it. So I do plan to vote yes to move this to council. And I'm also happy to hear more feedback from the public, possibly the business owner, whoever would like to reach out to hear other perspectives on it.
Okay. I would echo a lot of what's been shared. This, to me, is different because it's replacing rather than creating a new establishment. But I would also echo that desire for some additional clarity that we can provide to business owners. Because I do think density is a factor for a lot of folks. All right. So it's been moved by Mary Alice, and seconded by James for the consent agenda to move this on to City Council. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, so that motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2024-12-085R, A Resolution Approving an Increase in the Number of Liquor Licenses in the Class P Designation for H Mart Urbana LLC, Doing Business as H Mart 220 North Broadway Avenue.
This is another request for a liquor license for the sale of packaged liquor, which is liquor sold for consumption off premises. Andy Choi is here as the representative from H Mart. We've been working very closely with Andy for the past two years. And we're, thank you for being here, if you have any questions as the representative. Anyway, this would be a Class P package liquor license for the new H Mart, scheduled for its grand opening on January 16. And they're also requesting adding a grocery cafe rider, which is available to Class P licenses. which is available to Class P licenses. So this allows them to have a cafe inside the grocery store serving alcohol. And they're going to have a food court within H Mart as well. I believe four different vendors, restaurant vendors.
Any questions?
Can we have details on who the different options are going to be?
Any questions related to the liquor license?
All right, fine. No, I have no questions.
Folks on the phone, any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll move resolution number 2024-12-085R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class P designation for H Mart Urbana LLC, doing business as H Mart, 220 North Broadway Avenue. On to city council on consent for approval.
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Folks on the phone, any discussion?
No.
No, I don't really have, I have a comment, though, regarding the H Mart thing because that also had been previously a different store that also had packaged liquor. So once again, I kind of agree with what James was saying as far as what, there's not really an increase is this new owner, new filing for the liquor store. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, and to be clear, this is a supermarket.
Right. Sorry, yeah, a supermarket.
Okay. So it's been moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice for the consent agenda. Those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Next, we have council input and communication. Does anyone have input and/or communication? Folks on the phone?
I would like to say something.
Please go ahead, Sharice.
Yeah. I just want everybody to know, in the public to know, and I was attending the meeting last week, only like tonight, there was issues, you know, with the sound. And although I couldn't make any comment last week, I want to make comment this week regarding the fact that I was really happy to see that the resolution regarding Hart Strong Grocery and Angela Bradley's endeavor to put a grocery store in Ward 3 passed, that made me extremely happy. And I'm hoping that her application that she filed today is a successful one. So, and I hope that she, that we are capable and able to continue to support her in this endeavor should she be granted the grant that she's filing for.
Thank you, Sharice. Grace, did you have any communication?
No, thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, with no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.